Welcome, everyone, board meeting tonight. Appreciate everyone coming and packed house, love this, this is so great. We'll start here, get our meeting going with Pledge of Allegiance. Kim, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, we'd like to start just quickly with a little roll call of us who are here. If we can start down here at this end.
Mary Ann B. Allen, board member.
Corey Holmes, board member.
Paul Swett, superintendent.
Tyler Bluth, board member.
Kim Dickerson, board member.
Tom Hanson, board member.
Jason Waugh, business administrator.
All right, well, thank you, I think, again, very exciting, very proud of all of you. And we've, we have followed it closely and we would like to turn the time over to your, for your principal to bring this home.
Thanks, Tyler, it's an honor to be here with the 2024 State Champions! That there's a group of kids, and I saw a quote today about hard work. And if you're gonna work hard, if you don't work hard, it talked about working hard on the farm, and if you don't work hard, all you're going to get is weeds. And these guys have worked harder than any group of kids I've ever seen. They started out this year taking second every single competition they went to. And they didn't give up, they didn't stop, they kept going. I would leave the high school at 5:30, 6 o'clock at night when it started getting dark, and these guys were out on the side of the high school practicing in the lights or the car lights or something, just to make sure they were prepared for state. And they go down to state and they defeated our nemesis, Timpew. So, I'm just honored to be their principal, these kids work hard, they put a lot of time and effort into what they do, and I'm really proud of them. So, I wanted to present to you the Wasatch marching band.
I don't know what else can be said. Thank you, is there, we'd love to hear from some of you, on your experience, and if we could hear a couple great members?
And the teacher.
And the teacher, yeah, that'd be great. Come on, Mr. Riska.
Well, it's been a lot of firsts for us this year, which has been great. We had also a baby the week before state in Siski, so it was a little bit chaotic, but I think that's the miracle of what I get to enjoy with these kids is, and I wish you could experience it too, in the sense of, I get to see all of these kids come together, and I could honestly not show up to rehearsal, we have such great leaders in our, our students and, and our staff that I wouldn't feel worried about us getting things done. And they really have worked hard, but if, if you came to one of our competitions, you'll notice these props and things that we have out here, we have all these parents that have been coordinated to help bring them, we, we carried three trailers with us all season long, a 24 footer and also two 14 foot trailers to every competition. And every competition, we arrive about two hours early. And it's kind, the running joke is, we move with the timing of a military offensive with all this gear for an eight minute show. And it has to be coordinated, anytime we're late to a warm-up lot or to our staging spot for, for getting on the field, we can get penalized for being late. And these kids, they pulled it off for every performance this year. And I am super proud of them, and if you ever have a chance to come to one of our competitions, come with us the whole, whole way through, and watch what these parents and these kids do, because it is incredible. And they really only get that one chance every show to get it perfect.
Could you tell us what categories you're, you're judged on, how, how does it work?
So, there, there is quite a few things, number one, our timing and getting on and off the field, that's one area that we, we can be judged on, but also in the areas of music, our visual performance, we have judges that are over the percussion ensemble and also our battery on the field. And so, at state, we actually received some, some additional caption awards and additional throughout our, our season, but we received the top color guard award, which is our color guard here, hey, color guard? We also received our top award in music, so that's a big one, because that's our full performance ensemble, an award in music, so, good, there. And also top in our visual performance, so, everything they did visually on the field was considered the top out of all of the groups, so, yeah, super proud of them. Our, our show this year was titled "A Sky Full of Stars", and we tried to pick a theme that kind of is something we can discuss throughout the season. And you'll, you'll notice on their shirts here, they have different constellations on their shirt. We talked about, you know, where, where are you getting direction in your life this year? And what, what's motivating you to, to, to move forward in life? And we talked about this last couple weeks about the, the term discipline, and I read a meme recently that it's, that's the highest form of self-love is through being disciplined. And this group definitely pulled it off and did a great job this year, so I couldn't be prouder. It's, it's an exciting thing for me to watch them develop, so, thank you.
Yeah, anyone else, parents, kids, love to hear from you, this is terrific. I, I just want to say, I, I had the opportunity to watch you guys a little bit during, during the football season. I, I was so impressed, just standing on the sideline one, one ballgame, and, and I know you were on a time crunch, and I was so impressed how all of you worked together just to get off the field. And, and it was a collaborated effort that I, and, and they did, you got off on time. And it was very impressive how you, how you all worked together. It's, it's very, very, very good team is what you guys are.
Hello? I'm Tanner. Um, I just want to come up here and say that band has taught me a lot. And when I joined, I first thought, I'm just gonna learn my instrument, and that's it. I have learned more about dedication and commitment than I ever have in any other group. It's a big commitment to be a part of the band, it's being at every single rehearsal, it's knowing your part, it's putting in the time and effort after school. It's, it's a lot, and band has managed to teach me that. And this is only my second year in band, but I feel like I've come pretty far. And it, it's amazing, the community here is great, everyone can join. And the amazing staff, I want to thank, because when I first joined, I didn't know a lot. I thought I did, I'd been playing saxophone for two years before, but it wasn't very great knowledge that I had. But within one year, I managed to improve my skills unlike any other. It was a very wonderful experience for me. And, yeah, I also want to thank the parents for coming to every single competition and making this work for us as students, and, uh, yeah, thank you, guys.
Hey, before you get started, I just want to say that we've sat through a lot of board meetings where people have come up and made comments, and we were patient, and we listened to every single one of them. So, whoever wants to come up today, we will sit here all night long and listen to your comments.
To, to a point.
I've, I've, I've been in meetings where we've listened to comments where we haven't really wanted to listen to them, and we heard everybody out. So, come on up.
Hi, um, I'm, I'm Cash, I'm a...
Cash who?
I'm a...
What's your last name?
Graham, Graham. Uh, I, I'm a senior this year, I've been a marching band for four years, and I personally have experienced getting last place at state and first place at state. And the one biggest takeaway that I've gotten from this marching band is probably the moment after you get awards and you walk off the field and you're in the parking lot and everybody's crying and calling their parents and, and everything. I think from my, from my freshman year, I didn't really have tons of friends, and I didn't know who to talk to after getting state and, or, you know, getting last place, nobody, nobody's super excited about getting last place, but, uh, after getting state my senior year, I have never felt more connected to my friends, like, they are all like a family to me. And I've been through, you know, a couple seasons and all the friends that I've made before they've left, but it's like they haven't left, you know, it's still like a strong family and a strong connection with everybody, and I've, I feel like I've found a place to not be afraid or not be put down at all or not be judged, you know, everybody, everybody pushes each other so far, and it's, it's really motivating and has pushed me as a person to go do other things. And, you know, to think my freshman year, I didn't even want to do band because it was hard. But, no, I just love this group of people, and I have never felt we're at home.
Move this down, sorry, I'm a little vertically challenged. My name is Jasper. I don't go to school at Wasatch. I go to school in a town just that way called South Summit High. I have one other friend who has joined me last year, her name is Izzy, she could not make it tonight. So, I will be standing here speaking for the both of us. I am in color guard, and this is the first thing since softball that has stuck with me. I have been doing this for three seasons now, I am a junior. Three fall seasons, I've done two winter and then one coming winter. I, like Cash said, this is a family, this is a family I've come to love and enjoy being here and want to be here more. I make a 30-minute drive as much as I can because of how much I want to be here. That is how much this means to a lot of people. I have made friends that I would never have even come close to making. I have met people that I'd never like be able to meet. I have grown so much as a person, and this is something that I have discovered I want to continue doing, which is something that I can find both in colleges or independent groups, like, it's, it's a big thing, and it's important, and I love it. So, yeah, it's a family and I really appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Megan. Hi, thank you, thank you. Oh, ever since I was like a little girl, my parents, like, my parents are both musicians, they've both been invested in music their entire lives. So, I was introduced to music in like being a musician when I was a little girl, and my dad handed me a little plastic trombone and said, "Here, go ahead and play in it", and I did, and he was like, "Wow, you're gonna do so good!" But yeah, I've been following music my entire life, and it's never like, I mean, like, it's always had great importance, but I've never really like fully committed to it and fallen in love with playing an instrument and doing color guard until this most recent season, which I first started like eighth grade, I did winter guard, and that's where I really felt welcomed and felt brought into like this whole new community when I thought, like, no one cares about me, I'm just like in the background for everyone. I was brought into this whole new community where everyone was just willing to step out of their way to help me out and show me love. And so, this is now, I'm going into my seventh season for winter, like, for color guard in general. But yeah, this has been an incredible growing experience for all of us. And it's given us all a big sense of community and want and love that we have all come to enjoy. And even when you feel like left out or just ignored by all of your friends, all of your peers, you know that you have a home in the music community and in the band and in the guard, and you know that no matter what, they will come to love you, they will support you and help you grow. And it's really incredible how much just this small group of people and like all this commitment and hard work can create such a tight bond between all of us. And it's really great having this second family.
I'm Melissa. And marching band has been super important to me. Um, I've grown up in a family where like hard work is something that we all do, so I knew that band would be easy hard work-wise. And I, I joined color guard knowing that it would be physically hard and mentally hard, and I knew it would teach me to be stronger, but I had no idea the different things that band would teach me through being here. I've learned to be patient is, through being guard captain, I've learned to be patient and learned very much to better love people. Band has taught me, not by teaching me to love people, but by seeing other people love me. Band is not only a super amazing sport to do and so much fun to be around, but band has been a place to be loved by literally everyone, I love everyone here. And I'm so grateful that I was able to spend three years here, and I'm so glad that I chose to do color guard, because this has been an amazing experience, and I am so grateful for all the people I met. And if I wouldn't have done band, I wouldn't have met the friends and family that I will forever love and care about, and I'm hoping that this helped me.
Hi, I'm Naomi. Hi. I'm the drum major, the other drum major, Isaac couldn't be here tonight, but I hope that what I say up here is also, I can speak for him as well. This is my fourth year doing marching band, and my, I'm going into my eighth color guard season. And I love these kids like they're my own family. The, we talk about the bandaly a lot, the band family, and that's really true, it's not just a sport. It's, it's so much more than that, it's a sport and it's your family, it's the people you spend hours and hours and hours with trying to coordinate, to create an amazing show, and I think what's amazing about this sport is no one sits on the side, everyone has a place here, it's not like if you're out sick, someone's gonna fill in for you. It's like everyone has a place here and everyone has wanted here, and we want everyone to be here. The, the freshmen that joined my first year are, are seniors this year. And watching them grow these last four years has been one of the most amazing experiences ever. And even just at the beginning of the season, seeing the new freshmen join, how far they've, they've come, I've gotten to know them so well and I love them so much, they're, everyone in this band is just so amazing and so talented, and it makes me so happy to be able to, to be with them. And being the drum major this year has probably been one of the best experiences ever. And I have grown so much as a leader and as a person and as a friend, and I could not have done it without these amazing people that I love so much. And I'm a junior, and I cannot wait to do this for one more season next year, and I am so excited. I love these people.
I'm Jess, uh, I am one of the people who are behind the big rectangles that they look like from the video, but they're actually big triangles. And I came to the band literally halfway through last year. And it's because like they, they just needed people to help with the props, and so I kind of felt like a secondary person. But, uh, it's like, so I would like just shadow Adri, my sister, and, and like kind of like depend on her to feel like I was part of the group. But then like a, a few, like a few other, like, few other people like Naomi, they saw that and they kind of welcomed me in. And like, uh, like then, then like after this season was over and winter guard started, I tried it out and everyone was so welcoming, like, I didn't feel like an outsider anymore. And then when this last season started, it was completely different. Like, I had, I had people I knew were friends, and I felt like I was truly a part of it. And when the two new prop people came in, me and the other prop person from last year, like, and so many others in the band, we, I think we tried and maybe succeeded in, in making them part of the band family, which is something that is so amazing and that I feel like has been such a blessing to me and the other people in the band. So, I'm grateful for all of them.
Sorry if I'm a little shaky, I get nervous when I talk in front of people. Um, but my name is Hannah, and I'm a senior this year at Was, oh, hi. I'm a senior this year at Wasatch, and it has been such an amazing experience for me to be here. It's been like a rock with me throughout my hard times and my good times. But I feel like I'm kind, there's like this kind of this little thing in the band that I'm like the mom of the band, I do everybody's hair, I bring extra stuff for people, I bring snacks if people need them, and it helps me realize how important the leadership is and this is, is within this band, and how important they are to the kids, and how important our staff is to our kids, to help show them the way, to be that guide for them, to be someone there for them with, maybe they don't have somebody at home, or they don't have any other friends, or they don't have anybody to look up to, it's something there that's a constant rock. And I really hope that that continues, because some of these kids really need it, and I know that I really needed it when I was a freshman, because I didn't have very many friends when I was a freshman. And I remember how important those leaders were to me and how it made me want to go out and be a leader, even though it made me really nervous, and I'm very thankful for that, and I love all of you guys very much.
Hi, I am Christine, I'm a junior here in the band. And, I'm gonna be honest, was not something that I ever expected to do in my life. I did dance before this, and I was like, my mom told me that she was gonna sign me up for marching band, and I told her no, I would, I did not want to do it, didn't want to be a part of that, not my thing. I had been playing flute for some time before this, and I was like, "I'll just do private lessons for my entire life" and never progressed past that. But my mom signed me up, was not my favorite thing going into it, but by the end of my freshman year, I was in tears at state, just sobbing my eyes out over stupid reasons. And it helped me grow so much as a person, like, I don't know, if I hadn't done band, I wouldn't know anyone that I know in here today. I probably wouldn't look twice at them, I would walk past them in the hallway, wouldn't say hi, wouldn't smile, nothing. And now, I would probably jump on their back as I walked past them in the hallway. They are, everyone has been so amazing to me, especially the leaders that I've had over the years. You know, I started out my freshman year with an amazing leader, since then, all amazing leaders, they've all been so amazingly welcome to me, and they've taught me literally everything I know. It's made, it's made me love bands more than anything, like, literally, anytime someone asks me like a fun fact about myself, I do band, that's it. And it's just been an amazing experience, every year, I go in hating it, and I come out sobbing at state because I don't want it to be over. I don't know, I'm just so happy to be here, and I'm so happy that like it's grown so much over the years.
Okay, so my voice is kind of lost, so it might like go out for a bit, but hi, I'm Akira. I play clarinet, I've been playing clarinet for quite a while now. When I first moved up here, my mom was like, "You should join marching bands", because she was in American Fork, and American Fork is such an amazing band. First, I only knew Christine and Elsie, and that's it, and we all went into marching bands having no idea what we were doing, and I remember me and Christine complaining so much on how we wanted to leave so much. But then I remember the drum major, Buffalo we called him, he passed me this note and he just like wrote all this appreciation to me, and that was kind of like my inspiration to join band, and I wanted to be like him, I wanted to help other freshmen, so now that I'm here, it's my junior year, it's, this is my fourth year of band, I've just built this family, everyone's been saying family, and it really is a family, I feel like without everyone together, this would be nothing. We seriously have a family tree, we adopt each other, it, it's pretty great, and I have children of my own. But yeah, it's just, it really is, Riska says all the time that everyone's leaders, and there's, I'm the section leader, but I feel like everyone here has made a participation point into the band, and they've all worked so hard, and if, for example, like for state performance, we encourage energy, and that energy really brought us to first, and we all were so encouraged, and I've just learned that positive attitudes can really bring the best things ever.
Hi, I'm Ray. I do color guard, this is my second season marching, coming up on my
I do color guard. This is my second season marching, coming up on my third season of winter. Um, and this like final like kind of competition, I was gonna go to Wyoming next year and march for a uh, DCI group called Troopers. And doing that final state run, I decided I didn't want to because how much I love these people. And that was a huge opportunity for me. Um, and it's a really good band if you haven't heard of them. But I love all these people so much that I decided I didn't wanna go anymore. I mean, I've made some of my best friends um, here that I could never, ever make anywhere else. People that I wouldn't look twice at in the hall, like Christine said. Um, and wearing this jacket, I found a piece of glitter on it. And at state, I was talking about how much I hated the glitter and how I'd never want to put it on again and now I miss it so much. Because it makes me think of that, that was it and that's the last time I ever marched a show with these amazing people. And I never thought I'd grow as much as I have with this group since I joined in Corolla with Megan. And it's just, I love these people. They're my best friends, so. Kind of sucks that I'm graduating next year.
Alright, uh, I'm Ben. Hi guys. Um, I just wanted, I've been doing marching band for two years now. I'm a senior. Um, and I wanted just to talk about the leadership in this band. I, I'm not in the leadership myself. Um, I do other leadership in other clubs and stuff. And I know how hard it is sometimes to balance trying to almost productivity with actually like having fun at some place. And I feel like the leadership here does it amazingly. The, the band leadership, um, they're so good at just being your friend and being there for you and having fun at band while still being able to actually get stuff done and being productive and working towards this goal and even getting first at state. It's just so amazing. They are such dedicated people. They put so much into the band. Like Rizka said, um, if you weren't here, I know stuff would still get done because of our awesome student leadership. Um, so yeah, I just wanted to say you guys are amazing. Thank you for these two years.
Hello, I am Claire. Hey guys, I love you guys. I was the color guard captain this year and oh boy. It was an amazing chance to watch everyone grow and I've been here since, this is my third season. I've been here with all of our vets and in the beginning I was like, oh yeah, I'm hearing a lot of people talk about this band family and I didn't really get it. And now I'm sitting here like, yeah, that's my family over there. That's, those are who I belong with. That's, that's who I choose to be with. And in these three years that I've been here, it's been great to watch all of my, all of my friends grow so much, especially in the leadership position. I've been able to help them grow especially. And I just, this is one of the things that you can't really put into words of how amazing the experiences is of being with the people that you love. And I'm just so grateful that I was able to be here this season with the people. Made a lot of friends, a lot of friends that are, I hope will stay with me for, forever. And I'm just grateful for everyone in the band and all of the hard work that they put in. They are so hardworking and yeah.
Hi, I'm Cam. I'm a very emotional person, so if I start crying, I'm sorry. I started marching band because of Megan and Ray. They were very kind towards me. I, thank you. I had a hard time making friends, so I was really scared to come to marching band, but they're all so, they're so beautiful and they're all very kind. They're very kind people. There's nothing really to hate about marching band besides the glitter. The hair makes you bald a little bit. The spade spuns were not it, but it's okay, cause people liked it. I've always wanted to do something cool and this place is a very cool community to be in. They make sure that, um, you're welcomed. I would quit because I wasn't doing too good mentally and a lot of people texting me to come back because I was missed and I was like, okay, this is weird. Cause I'm like, I've, I've always been like, oh, people do not like me, but um, it's uh, mental health. I mean, my mental health be better. It wasn't that good in the beginning of the year. I wanna thank Jenny. She taught me how hard work was. And that it pays off, so. Sorry, this is disgusting. I'm sorry. And I also wanna thank Bren. She's very, they're all very kind to you, so. Yeah, I say join marching band because it's really fun.
Hi, I'm Kate. Um, I'm a junior and this is actually my first year in band. My freshman and sophomore year, I was in volleyball. And I was actually on like the JV team and I didn't have a lot of friends there. Um, my freshman year I did have friends. I had like Avery and Maddie, but like after that, I just felt really lonely. And I was friends with like a lot of band kids, but I wasn't in band yet. And um, volleyball and band have like conflicting seasons. And after like my last season of volleyball, I decided that I wanted to join band and quit volleyball. And it was kind of hard to convince my parents, but I eventually did it. And I just wanna say that I already felt like I was part of the band family before I joined. And like all of these people are just so amazing and I'm so grateful for them. And I don't know, like, I don't know, I just, I have been happy. Like mu- a lot more recently than I was in volleyball. And I just love everyone so much and I'm grateful for them.
Hi, my name's Seth Palazir. I'm a parent. Hi everybody. Hi Jess. I, as you've probably heard, all the students come up. As a parent, I can't think of anything I wouldn't want my kids to be in, you know? I'm so appreciative of um, uh, Rizka and Siska, as we call her, and all the other um, staff that helps support this. It's really easy as a parent to support this group and this group of kids. And I know the hundreds, if not thousands of hours that of all the tears it takes to put on this. And I'm sure if they receive a stipend, it's probably not enough either. Cause it's pennies on the hours they put in. And I just see what my own kids learn from this and it's such a neat thing. And it's just the um, ability to coach one another and support one another. And um, seeing bands and just the um, nature of it. It's not like other competitions you might go to where you're trying to get at the other teams. The students will cheer on each other. They don't judge each other. They help each other. Um, last year, some of our props broke and another band brought over parts, you know, to help put together. And it's just been the neatest thing to see this kind of um, family is like they like to put together. And it's such a neat thing to have my kids be supported in a program like this. And I appreciate you taking the time today to recognize all the efforts of these bands and these kids and the staff and everyone's put into this, so thank you.
Hello, my name is Craig. You don't have to say it. Um, I grew up in a home with uh, sorry, I get emotional too, so don't even feel bad. And I sit in these meetings like all the time, so. I grew up in a home with brothers and we all played sports. And uh, when I grew up, I wanted my kid to be, kids to be involved in something that was like that. That you get that family, that you work, you sweat, you, you fight for something. And I'll tell you what, band is it. And not only is it, is it it, but you look at these kids and you've got a lot of kids that are in National Honor Society, that are in AP classes, that are presidents and leaders of different clubs. I look at these kids and I know that some of them have been through awful things this year and they've overcome. I agree that the stipend is probably not enough. And now that you've heard all the sob stories in the kids, I just beg you, please, as much funding as you can give music because it changes kids' lives and kids that you usually don't reach. Because if you feel a part of something and a part of a community, that's when you thrive. I am just so grateful uh, for the experiences that I've had, that I've seen, that I've, that I've seen kids overcome some of the, the hardest things in life. And this is just a microcosm that teaches them that they can overcome and that they can, they can succeed. Even if they are, you know, different than other kids. Um, even if they don't play sports or the most popular kid or whatever. To me, they're learning things in band and learning things in life here that will help them take, you know, the goal to elevate, to, to make Wasatch, to take it into the world and to build that foundation. My kids always get mad at me because I'm always singing my high school fight song. I went to Provo High, so I don't like Tim View either. And, and Alan gets it, cause he went there too. But guess what? My daughter knows how to play the fight song. She knows the fight song probably better than half the students because she's gotta play it at every pep rally and every, every band thing. So I'm grateful for that and I'm grateful for all the hard work that these kids did, so thank you.
Hi, I'm Mr. Pruso. Uh, I'm, I happen to have fallen into the situation where I have a lot of, I, I cross paths with the band a lot. Any association with the band is apparently very time consuming. Um, I'm a, I'm a teacher at the high school and I also have a, a son who plays sousaphone. His name is Bo. And um, I, I get a lot of these kids in my classes because I teach nerd subjects. And so I get to, I get to spend a lot of time with, with these kids and it, and it's just amazing to see. So just as an educator, I really admire Mr. Rizka and everything that he does. Um, as a teacher, I see how hard these kids work in everything they do, including marching band. As a new uh, member of the community or new to Heber, I, I just couldn't ask for a better, a better community to embrace uh, my, my student son. He's a freshman. The juniors and seniors just rally around him and, and really, really um, help him through this freshman year. So thank you, band. Thank you, students. The most amazing thing to me is that after all of the work and rehearsal and travel, that you still wanna hang out with each other. And, and they, and they really do. It's, it's an, it's an incredible community, incredible family. Uh, Mr. Rizka's doing amazing things and, and these kids uh, work way harder than I do. And uh, way beyond my contract hours, so good job, band.
Um, hi, I'm Elsie. And um, I remember back in the fall of 2019, my mom told me that she had played the flute when she was younger, her mother had, and my great grandmother had, and that she wanted me to do band for at least a year. And I could quit after if I wanted. And so I, I just started playing and I really loved it so much. And I found passion and emotion in music like I had never been able to see before. And it brought more color and meaning into life. And um, I ended up being able to go to some of the football games and playing with the high school kids, which I thought were the coolest people to ever exist. And um, I, this was back in the pirate show year and I saw them in their uniforms going onto the field and it just blew me away how and it just seemed so incredible to me and like at that moment, I knew that this is what I wanted to keep doing. And then COVID-19 hit and I didn't know if I was gonna be able to stay, but I ended up being one of the only people in the beginner band classes staying online, practicing as much as I could. And when I came back, I could join the older kids in bands and the summer before my eighth grade year, I decided to join the band because they were allowing younger students to be there for parades and I was in love with it. It was the most fun experience I had had. I made more friends the first week of bands that year than I'd probably made almost my entire life. And, and I had been playing tennis and they said that I could have joined the varsity team if I wanted to, but my mind was already made up and I had my heart set on not just music, but these people and how amazing they are and what an amazing group they are. And it's just been the most fun cohesive group of people. It's like how in kindergarten, you are always getting along with each other. You don't even need to ask if you wanna be friends. You just immediately bond. And I just, that's what I love the most about this amazing community of people.
Hi, I'm Carrie Thacker. I am a mom of a senior this year. And honestly, we went to the meeting thinking that we were just gonna be doing parades. Boy, were we wrong. But I am so glad that my son has stuck with it. He has learned so many life lessons through doing marching band. He has learned commitment. He has learned to follow through and to be there when he says he's going to be there. Even when it's freezing and there is frost on the field, they are there. And what these kids have all said is true and I've witnessed it. See, I'm a crier. Travis walked in his freshman year, actually he was an eighth grader, walking in to see what band was all about. And all of those seniors and all of those kids from the band rallied around him and said, what are you playing? We're so excited to have you in the, in the fall. That's what kind of kids these are. They don't exclude anybody. That is kind of a policy with the band. Nobody's excluded. It doesn't matter if you can read music. It doesn't matter if you can twirl a flag. It doesn't matter. They accept you and they will teach you. And that is something really special for a lot of these kids. I've talked to former band students and you've witnessed it tonight. That it has literally saved some kids in a mentally health challenge. And the reason that they are here today is because of this group. They don't always get the recognition that they deserve. This last week and a half, they have received so much and I am so proud of them because they've earned every ounce of it. Please take the time to see how you guys can help support them more. There's a lot of things that I know you guys do support them, but there's a lot of things that they do need. Um, the parents are amazing. They have the best set of parents. They are there no matter what time, rain or shine. As of tonight, when we were gonna perform on the field, you had parents saying that they would shine lights for these kids, that they would go early and pack up all the props. Just come here early, set up the props so that they were ready for these kids to go. Please take the time to see how else the board and how our school district can support these kids. They have grown so much. We started doing a community show that Alan started four years ago. And I bet there was probably a hundred and fifty in the stands. In the last three years, those stands have been packed because we've been able to teach the community what marching band is, what these kids do, and how hard they work. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alan. I am, I, I have the uh, the good fortune of being on staff, so I get to work closely with these kids. Um, it's good to see you again. I used to come to the board meetings to advocate for music education. This, this is why, we need more. More of these kids, more of these stories and more of these parents. Thank you.
That was brief. Uh, I'm Chantel. I'm Alan's wife. Um, so I am a Wasatch High graduate. I, and I played in band.
Bossa ninety-seven?
Bossa ninety-seven, yeah. Class of ninety-seven, yeah. Uh, almost thirty years later, I can still play that fight song from memory on my flute. And I, I'm sorry, please don't throw things at me. I can't rag on Tim View because those are my kids. I'm a music educator down in Provo. But I, I do want to talk about marching band. Uh, seven, eight years ago, I walked into a band meeting with a brand new little freshman. Had absolutely no idea what I was walking into. Uh, because this did not exist when I was in high school, at least we didn't participate in it. And what a world we have walked into. We have been involved with this band for seven years. And I am an uber nerd. A lot of parents, they'll like go and maybe move props and then go off on the field and they help feed the kids and do the stuff. Or they'll maybe come and watch their kid's show and then leave. I will go sit and watch four hours of marching band because I'm just that big of a nerd. And it's so much fun. It's fun sitting in the stands with all of the parents and, oh, what's, what's your band? And what's your kid play and stuff? And then as you wait throughout the competition. And all of the other bands come in and they're cheering each other on and they're all friends and they goof around with each other. It's a community like I've never experienced. And so I encourage everyone just to go to one full marching band competition. I always encourage the parents too, just because it is the coolest experience you will ever have.
Hey, excuse me, thanks guys. Okay, we're going to keep you, you'll be the last one, kid that just stood up, okay? You'll, you'll be our last one. All right, thank you.
Hey, um, my name's Carson. I'm currently. Hey, guys. Um, I'm currently a junior, I play drum set, you know, um. Making friends here is like super easy, like they all said, like especially in this like environment of, um, of learning music. Cause you're all trying to accomplish the same thing to create a show for like, uh, for the audience, you know, that they enjoy. And you know, getting second like this whole season and finally for state getting first, I can finally say like, we the best music. You know, thank you, guys.
Hey, guys, my name's, uh, Jensen. Um, I'm on, I was on bass drum this year, battery. Um, yeah, I kind of joined three years ago just because my sister did it and it looked super fun. I didn't, I never expected to make this many friends and just have this much fun in it. And yeah, I'd just like to thank you guys for such an amazing year. Thank you, guys.
Um, hi, I'm Noah, I'm a sophomore, um. I started off high school last year as simply just theater. And I was mostly only going to do theater and I thought band kids were super weird. No offense to you guys. Um, I'm not done yet. Um, basically, and then I met Zella second semester and she convinced me to join band this year. A little bit late though, so I was just a prop turner. And within these like, what, three months, four months of being a prop turner, I have met so many people. It has been so much fun and I just love my band and love all you guys. Thank you for making marching band fun.
Hi, I'm Matt. I rock the snare drum in the marching band. Um, and my relationship with the marching band is kind of like love and hate. Like, it is so hard. Like after rehearsal, um, my head just hurts from, from like all the music and just kind of like trying to make everything fit and learning my part. And I'm just so tired because I'm wearing my drum for like three hours and we're marching and I'm trying to keep good posture and good technique and all that. And, and it is an activity unlike none other though, because it is so rewarding. And it just, it gets you a little bit of everything. Um, it is, I mean, it's, it's physical and it, it gets you moving and, and I mean, music just makes you smarter. And, uh, and, and it just kind of nourishes your soul and it is so social. We are just like, everyone loves each other. And it is such a good family and such a good group of people and I'm really happy to have the band, so.
Uh, hi, I'm Rome Vrody. I'm a synth, I'm a junior, I just joined. I just joined this year, um, and I, I was always, I wa, I wanted to join because of my friend Thomas. I don't think he's here. Thomas, you here? No. Um, but, uh, he, I could never hang out with him because he was always doing marching band. So I was always, I was always like, what, what, what's the deal? What, what is it like? What are you doing? And so when there was an opening for a synth, I'm like, I play piano, I'm, I'm okay at it. And as soon as I joined, like now I have just this whole group of friends that like I can always rely on and I know that I can always, um, you know, hang out with them, like it's, it's good. I, I wish that I would have joined in middle school, that's how much that I like it. Like I'm sad I joined late in that junior year, but, uh, yeah.
Thank you.
I know you said he was the last one, but I just have to get up. I'm Siski and they call me that because the first year we were here, ten years ago. Um, a kid at camp, I, I work with the Woodwinds mainly because I'm a saxophonist and a flute player. Anyway, um, a kid at camp, he went to say Sister Rizka, but then he caught himself and it came out Siski and it has stuck. He realized he was in the wrong setting for Sister Rizka at school. So he called me Siski and that's why they call me Siski. But it's convenient because now we have no confusion as to who they're talking to. But, um, just want to point out some of these kids, they didn't tell you their false story. They didn't tell you that they tried quitting because it's actually really hard and sometimes I'm a pain in the butt and they hate me because I want it perfect and I want it really good. I don't just want it okay. I want it perfect. And, um, and they've, some of them have tried quitting. Um, but we see the value in the program. And so we're like, no, don't, you can't quit, you know? And we really try our hardest to get these kids to stay. Because when they experience this kind of, um, event, you know, that we're showing up here and this kind of event right here and some of the social things we do. Um, I'm not teaching music because I want to create more musicians. I don't want them to go out and think they're going to make a living as a musician because that's like the biggest farce, right? They call them starving artists for a reason. So I'm not teaching music because I think that they should all become music educators even. We also know how hard being an educator is. But I think the reason that we're doing this is to create leaders in society. Hopefully one of them will be sitting in a boardroom like this someday, helping to guide the next school district or the next whatever. And we're hoping to help create people who know how to serve. We really strive to teach them servitude leadership. Rizka is the epitome of that. I'm not so much, but I've learned a lot from working by my husband's side and I, I, um, thank him for letting me be part of this program. Uh, I always joke, I'm the assistant to the regional director. I really, I, I don't know what else to call myself, um, but I just want these kids to know how much we truly care about you. We have four, oh, five now, five beautiful children of our own and sixty plus band kids. And I truly consider them our kids when I talk about them. And, uh, we, we have a special place in our heart for all our band kids. And we love seeing, um, we love seeing this progress with you. But even the year we took dead last, those kids are still in our hearts. And we still have the same hopes and dreams for them that they'll go on to be great leaders. It's fun to win first, it's fun to bring home blame, but thank you, sorry for the extra time.
Thanks for allowing, uh, our students to talk about the importance of music and band and, and what being involved in extracurricular activities does for students, whether it's a club or a organized band or sports. It, it makes Wasatch High School feel small. And we're also excited that we're going to have another opportunity to have a smaller high school soon. So, um, we've prepared a little video that we'd like to kind of show, uh, the, uh, state championship performance. So if you guys would like to watch that, I'll turn the time over to Stacy and she'll push play.
Joining us from Heber City in town, please welcome the Wasatch High School Marching Band. Presenting their program, A Sky Full of Stars by Steve Vento. Featuring the selections Imaginarium, Tristan and Yvain, Blue and A Sky Full of Stars. The U M E eight Red Rock State Marching Band Championships is proud to present drum majors Isaac Heath, Naomi Hibbert, and the Wasatch High School Marching Band. Thank you, that was, again, sense your energy, love it so much. Appreciate all of you for coming tonight. We are now going to transition to the rest of our meeting, but thank you so much for coming and go Wausatch, let's do it again. Yeah, let's take just a small break if we could and we'll resume here in about three minutes or so.
Thank you, that was, again, sense your energy, love it so much. Appreciate all of you for coming tonight. We are now going to transition to the rest of our meeting, but thank you so much for coming and go Wausatch, let's do it again. Yeah, let's take just a small break if we could and we'll resume here in about three minutes or so. Okay. So, let's move into public comment. If we have any public comments, Stace? If you do, you have two minutes to come and talk.
Can we close those doors?
You can't, you can only close, you have to leave them open.
Oh, you can't?
It's a public meeting.
I thought we could close doors, but we can't.
We can't close doors?
We can't close the doors.
Okay, then if no public comment, we'd like to move into consent items, if we could.
I make a motion that we approve the consent items as followed. So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We also have a very special thing tonight, that we're going to turn the time over to Paul Swett. Sorry, Alice, if you can't hear me, I'll speak into the mic a little bit more, but this is all about you next, so we're...
Thank you for being patient.
Thank you for being patient with us and being here, this is another unique conversation we're going to have tonight, I appreciate you coming, and we're going to turn the time over to Paul for this.
Great, thank you. If we could have Alice and, Alice Hicken and Ron Carlyle, please come up to the podium. While they're coming up, I might just mention that recently, Board Member Dickerson came to my office and brought Mrs. Alice Hicken with her, and they had a very interesting proposal, and Mr. Ron Carlyle, who kind of helps, is now helping with some of the Heber Valley Preservation items and issues here in the valley, joined us in a subsequent meeting, and we're really excited with what they've proposed to us, and I'm going to now turn some time over to them to present to the board and public their project that they have in mind that they would like us to be a part of.
Well, I would like to start by saying that my husband served in the, as the school board business official for, what, 25 years, and I never, ever attended a school board meeting.
Till now?
You got a good one tonight.
Yeah, that was an all-time favorite there.
So, it's nice to be here.
They weren't all like this.
I don't think they were like this. I think I'll begin by talking about two things. First, the history of an old cabin. The cabin that was, lived in, in the first time, oh, you have the picture. The first winter that the Heber settlers were in the valley. And this cabin was built by John Crook, who was a great-grandfather, and later on, he built a home in Heber City. This house, this cabin was dragged onto his property and lived, was there for a while. And then, the homestead people, the Whittakers, thought it might be a nice, little cute thing on their property. So they dragged it over, and they dragged it over in the middle of the night, in the back of Irv Anderson, I don't know if anybody knows him, no one's old enough here, see?
I know Irv.
They dragged him over, dragged the cabin over in the middle of the night, put it on two logs and dragged it over to the homestead. And they decorated it up, it had flowers on it, and they put a roof on it, as you can see. I really think at the time it was first, they first lived in it, the first winter, there was a sod roof. And the Dr. Green, who maybe, no, did a lot of work in preserving the history of this valley, and he came to me, I think it's probably been about 15 years ago, and gave me all the papers proving who the cabin belonged to, how it was taken over there, and that the Whittakers have it. And I gave all these papers to the homestead at one time, and this summer, I got word that the homestead had torn it down. And so I was just a little upset, so I went over and talked to the project people there, and I said, "Would you please not do anything to this pile of logs until I can get them removed?" So, I talked to my children, my boys, and they had, they were able to take the logs off. So now the logs are on my son's property, waiting to be put back together somewhere. Now, I am proposing that this cabin be put on this block. Now, this is another story, and I'm going to hopefully tie them together, if I can get my thoughts together. John Crook, who was the builder of this cabin, owned the red sandstone quarry east of Heber. Do you know where that is? Well, many, I have pictures, the courthouse is made out of that sandstone, which has been, not gone now. The tabernacle, I have many pictures, there's many houses in town that were made out of this red sandstone. And it wasn't, the house wasn't made out of sandstone, as I've driven around Heber, the foundation was made out of red sandstone. Well, there were a lot of schools in this valley that were made, that were built, and they were used over the years. This building here, the North School, is built out of what, do you think?
Sandstone.
Red sandstone.
From the quarry.
And, so, I feel like it is a fitting place. Now, across the, across the street is the Murdoch, where the peace treaty was signed, and there's a little monument there. And, I don't know, they had a big celebration in this block, right here, where they signed the peace treaty with the Indians. And, so, this is my proposal, to help us remember who we are, where we came from. The first settlers spent their first years in a cabin like this. It could be placed next to the Murdoch Monument, where the peace treaty was signed, so that people could live here peacefully. And it is, could be placed by an early school, only school existing in the valley, made from red sandstone. Okay? You want to say something? And he has to tell us that we're kind of related.
Yeah, we go back to John Crook, and Alice and I are kind of, John Crook is my second great-grandfather.
But, let me tell you, he, his mother was born in this cabin.
My great-grandmother was born in this cabin.
Born in that cabin.
In 1859. So it has particular interest to me, but beyond that, I think, and Alice alluded to this, I think that this cabin, if we, if we get it rebuilt and put it here, can be a great educational tool for youth and people, you know, of all ages, but we don't, we don't have anything in the valley or here in Heber standing anywhere like this. We need to put it back together, it's not going to be quite like just Lincoln Logs, like you do at Christmas time, but, but we're going to create a game plan to rebuild the cabin, refinish it, make it, make it really look nice. So, that's my two cents worth on this, I think it's a great, I work with the Heber City, Heber Valley Preservation Commission, so this is, of course, of great interest to us to establish this amongst the other things that we're trying to do here in Heber City.
Now, I, we chose this place, this special place here, by, kind of by the, over there by the monument, because I feel like it's the fitting place for it. I think there's talk of having it put on the grounds for the, where the tabernacle is, and I'm worried that by the time that could ever happen, the logs will be rotten. We don't have a lot of time, so, that's our proposal.
Right, love it.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion. Motion to approve, consideration to approve the reconstruction of the Crook Cabin School Building.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We also have a very special thing tonight, that we're going to turn the time over to Paul Swett. Sorry, Alice, if you can't hear me, I'll speak into the mic a little bit more, but this is all about you next, so we're...
Thank you for being patient.
Thank you for being patient with us and being here, this is another unique conversation we're going to have tonight, I appreciate you coming, and we're going to turn the time over to Paul for this.
Great, thank you. If we could have Alice and, Alice Hicken and Ron Carlyle, please come up to the podium. While they're coming up, I might just mention that recently, Board Member Dickerson came to my office and brought Mrs. Alice Hicken with her, and they had a, they had a very interesting proposal, and Mr. Ron Carlyle, who kind of helps, is now helping with some of the Heber Valley Preservation items and issues here in the valley, joined us in a subsequent meeting, and we're really excited with what they've proposed to us, and I'm going to, I'm going to now turn some time over to them to present to the board and public their project that they have in mind that they would like us to be a part of.
Well, I'd like to, I would like to start by saying that my husband served in the, as the school board business official for, what, 25 years? And I never, ever attended a school board meeting.
Till now?
You got a good one tonight.
Yeah, that was an all-time favorite there.
So, it's nice to be here.
They weren't all like this.
I don't think they were like this. I think I'll begin by talking about two things. First, the history of an old cabin. The cabin that was, lived in, in the first time, oh, you have the picture. The first winter that the Heber settlers were in the valley. And this cabin was built by John Crook, who was a great-grandfather, and later on, he built a home in Heber City. This house, this cabin was dragged onto his property and lived, was there for a while. And then, the homestead people, the Whittakers, thought it might be a nice, little cute thing on their property. So they dragged it over, and they dragged it over in the middle of the night, in the back of Irv Anderson, I don't know if anybody knows him, no one's old enough here, see?
I know Irv.
They dragged him over, dragged the cabin over in the middle of the night, put it on two logs and dragged it over to the homestead. And they decorated it up, it had flowers on it, and they put a roof on it, as you can see. I really think at the time it was first, they first lived in it, the first winter, there was a sod roof. And the Dr. Green, who maybe, no, did a lot of work in preserving the history of this valley, and he came to me, I think it's probably been about 15 years ago, and gave me all the papers proving who the cabin belonged to, how it was taken over there, and that the Whittakers have it. And I gave all these papers to the, to the homestead at one time, and this summer, I got word that the homestead had torn it down. And, so I was just a little upset, so I went over and talked to the project people there, and I said, "Would you please not do anything to this pile of logs until I can get them removed?" So, I talked to my children, my boys, and they had, they were able to take the logs off. So now the logs are on my son's property, waiting to be put back together somewhere. Now, I am proposing that this cabin be put on this block. Now, this is another story, and I'm going to hopefully tie them together, if I can get my thoughts together. John Crook, who was the builder of this cabin, owned the red sandstone quarry east of Heber. Do you know where that is? Well, many, I have pictures, the courthouse is made out of that sandstone, which has been, not gone now. The tabernacle, I have many pictures, there's many houses in town that were made out of this red sandstone. And it wasn't, the house wasn't made out of sandstone, as I've driven around Heber, the foundation was made out of red sandstone. Well, there were a lot of schools in this valley that were made, that were built, and they were used over the years. This building here, the North School, is built out of what, do you think?
Sandstone.
Red sandstone.
From the quarry.
And, so, I feel like it is a fitting place. Now, across the, across the street is the Murdoch, where the peace treaty was signed, and there's a little monument there. And, I don't know, they had a big celebration in this block, right here, where they signed the peace treaty with the Indians. And, so, this is my proposal, to help us remember who we are, where we came from. The first settlers spent their first years in a cabin like this. It could be placed next to the Murdoch Monument, where the peace treaty was signed, so that people could live here peacefully. And it is, could be placed by an early school, only school existing in the valley, made from red sandstone. Okay? You want to say something? And he has to tell us that we're kind of related.
Yeah, we go back to John Crook, and Alice and I are kind of, John Crook is my second great-grandfather.
But, let me tell you, he, his mother was born in this cabin.
My great-grandmother was born in this cabin.
Born in that cabin.
In 1859. So it has particular interest to me, but beyond that, I think, and Alice alluded to this, I think that this cabin, if we, if we get it rebuilt and put it here, can be a great educational tool for, for youth and people, you know, of all ages, but we don't, we don't have anything in the valley or here in Heber standing anywhere like this. We need to put it back together, it's not going to be quite like just Lincoln Logs, like you do at Christmas time, but, but we're going to create a game plan to rebuild the cabin, refinish it, make it, make it really look nice. So, that's my two cents worth on this, I think it's a great, I work with the Heber City, Heber Valley Preservation Commission, so this is, of course, of great interest to us to establish this amongst the other things that we're trying to do here in Heber City.
Now, I, we chose this place, this special place here, by, kind of by the, over there by the monument, because I feel like it's the fitting place for it. I think there's talk of having it put on the grounds for the, where the tabernacle is, and I'm worried that by the time that could ever happen, the logs will be rotten. We don't have a lot of time, so, that's our proposal.
Right, love it.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion. Motion to approve, consideration to approve the reconstruction of the Crook Cabin School Building.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
Let's get it, Bill.
Any discussion there, before we move on?
I just had a question, so I taught history, history is very important to me personally. My first home was built in 1912, and we gutted it down to the studs and kept as much as we could, and found signatures of the brick masons on the brick, and, so it means I love this stuff. I'm just wondering, so are we involving our CAPS kids, are we involving like our construction management kids in, in maybe rebuilding this?
I think there's, superintendent Swett will be over, yeah.
Yeah, there's discussion about that.
Okay, I was just wondering how we were going to do it.
They'll be working together.
Okay, that's awesome, I just think that's a great opportunity for kids to also...
That could be a good opportunity.
The kids to connect with the history. Yeah, they have a great teacher who's actually decades of construction experience and has built us homes, and we appreciate that.
What's the, what's the dimensions? Do we have all that, do we know the size, the foundation?
Slab?
I will get that somewhere.
We're going to need...
I'll go measure the logs over.
How big that's going to be to see if it'll fit there. Are those the original logs?
These are, yeah. There's a few that are rotten. Are rotten.
We'll replace those, but it'll look seamlessly with the others.
Historically restored?
Yes.
So, this cabin, the smoke, they had a fire in the middle of, in the floor, I know it was the middle, but the smoke came out of the, the peak of the roof, which is interesting, I think.
I, I think it was, it was important that the board voted tonight to approve this and, and put their full support behind it, and we will, we will schedule a meeting for you and Ron to come back, Mrs. Hicken, and we'll involve Mr. Kelly and others, and if there's board members that want to attend, and we'll, we'll come up with a good plan as to how to get the cabin restored, and I think, I think the board is fully behind this and willing to help out in any way that, that they can, and put some of our, of our district resources towards it to make, to make this a great project.
This will be fun.
It will be fun.
Beautiful square.
Awesome.
It will be very awesome.
Thank you, Alice.
Thank you so much.
We vote on this, we pass it?
Yes, we do.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks so much, Ron, as well, appreciate you, thanks so much. Next item, Stephanie Dishar.
Follow the marching band in the Cook Cabin, the calendar.
This is every minute of the time.
It is great, it is so important, because it sets our teachers and our students up for success, and it does impact a lot of individuals in the valley, and so I think it's amazing all the time that you've taken to consider it, to look at different options and gather different feedback. We've, you as a board has asked to do various surveys, look at various drafts, there was drafts one through five, the first draft was the one that went out, took some feedback, created additional drafts two through five, got feedback from all of our staff first, and then got feedback from our additional, from our parents, and based on all that feedback, as well as choosing a various calendar, as well as comments that people made, based on our discussions and everything that we had looked at, it seems as if draft three was the one that came out to be somewhat of a compromise, I guess I would say. Not everyone will be happy, some want this, some want that, but draft three was the one that addressed the fall break that was seeming to be the biggest issue, especially for our families. And so, I'm here to recommend, after all the discussions, that we adopt draft three at this time moving forward.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
I, I just think we put a lot of time and effort into this, as you said, and we looked at as many sizes we could, and I think we've come up with a good proposal, so.
Awesome.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your patience with us, appreciate it.
No, there was nothing, it was great, thanks.
Rob Neild.
Hello, I'm here for, we need to purchase some iPads for the high school, and then also some iMac, Mac minis for the high school labs and the middle school labs, and then some Mac for some teachers. And then it's the total amount that's up in front of you.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion there before you sit down, anything else there, guys? We have talked, we have spoken about this, this lease, and any other discussion about it?
I just had a question, so I taught history, history is very important to me personally. My first home was built in 1912, and we gutted it down to the studs and kept as much as we could, and found signatures of the brick masons on the brick, and so it means I love this stuff. I'm just wondering, so are we involving our CAPS kids? Are we involving like our construction management kids in maybe rebuilding this?
I think there's...
I think it's some great others, yeah.
Superintendent Swett will be over, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's discussion about that.
Okay, I was just wondering how we were going to do it.
They'll be working together to figure it out.
Okay, that's awesome, I just think that's a great opportunity for kids to also...
That could be a good opportunity.
The kids to connect with the history. Yeah, they have a great teacher who's actually decades of construction experience, and has built us homes, and we appreciate that.
What's the dimensions? Do we have all that, do we know the size, the foundation, slab?
I will get that somewhere.
We're going to need...
I'll go measure the logs.
How big that's going to be, to see if it'll fit there. Are those the original logs?
These are, the original logs.
There's a few that are rotten.
We'll replace those, but it'll look seamlessly with the others.
Historically restored?
Yes.
So, in this cabin, the smoke, they had a fire in the middle of, in the floor, and it was the middle, but the smoke came out of the peak of the roof, which is interesting, I think.
I think it was important that the board voted tonight to approve this, and put their full support behind it. And we will schedule a meeting for you and Ron to come back, Mrs. Hicken, and we'll involve Mr. Kelly and others, and if there's board members that want to attend, and we'll come up with a good plan as to how to get the cabin restored. And I think the board is fully behind this, and willing to help out in any way that they can, and put some of our district resources towards it to make this a great project.
This will be fun.
It will be fun. Beautiful square.
It'll be great.
Awesome, it will be very awesome.
Thank you, Alice.
Thank you so much. Can we pass it? We do.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks so much, Ron, as well, appreciate you, thanks so much. Next item, Stephanie Discher.
Follow the marching band in the Cook Cabin, the calendar. It is great, it is so important, because it sets our teachers and our students up for success, and it does impact a lot of individuals in the valley. And so, I think it's amazing all the time that you've taken to consider it, to look at different options, and gather different feedback. We've, you as a board is asked to do various surveys, look at various drafts. There was drafts one through five, the first draft was the one that went out, took some feedback, created additional drafts two through five, got feedback from all of our staff first, and then got feedback from our additional, from our parents, and based on all that feedback, as well as choosing a various calendar, as well as comments that people made, based on our discussions and everything that we had looked at, it seems as if draft three was the one that came out to be somewhat of a compromise, I guess I would say. Not everyone will be happy, some want this, some want that, but draft three was the one that addressed the fall break that was seeming to be the biggest issue, especially for our families. And so, I'm here to recommend, after all the discussions, that we adopt draft three at this time moving forward.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
I just think we put a lot of time and effort into this, as you said, and we looked at as many sizes as we could, and I think we've come up with a good proposal, so.
Awesome.
Thanks for your work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your patience with us, appreciate it.
No, there was nothing, it was great, thanks.
Rob Neild.
Hello. I'm here for, we need to purchase some iPads for the high school, and then also some iMac and Mac minis for the high school labs and the middle school labs, and then some Mac for some teachers. And then it's the total amount that's up in front of you.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Discussion there, before we sit down, anything else there, guys? We have spoken about this, this lease, and any other discussion about it?
Is this just updating?
This is updating.
Replacing old missions.
Alright, well, anything else? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Consideration to approve sale of property by Mr. Sean Kelly. Be esteemed.
Thank you. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about the purchase by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, a piece of property by the high school. I think Stacy has a picture of that, it's approximately .96 acres, that sits directly behind our school facility, it fits in there nicely by the tennis courts where the cursor is. That will be our tennis court complex, the red square is what we are proposing to sell to the church, and we feel like it'll be a great site, it's an improved lot, and the selling price, if you'll go back to that, I can't remember, $575,000. So tonight, I would request that we approve the sale of this piece of property to the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints for a total of $575,000.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any talk there, sports fans? Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, that concludes that part. We have listed here USBA New Board Member Institute, this is board report.
Yep, so it'll be at the Provo Marriott, December 7th, and then, and I believe presidents and vice presidents who are invited to attend as well. And then the annual conference is actually also the next month, less than a month away after that, so that'll be January 9th through 11th in Salt Lake. And then I believe the good old legislative session starts, what is it, January 20th this year, or next year? Something like that, let's see, January 21st, so that'll be when that all gets going, so. USBA will be nominating a new member for our region, so just putting it out there.
I'd just like to say thank you publicly, Mary Ann, for all your efforts, particularly helping us with the state, appreciate all you've done, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
I agree, yeah, I'm right behind Tyler.
Superintendent?
I don't really have anything to add, we covered a few things in our study session this evening. We, well, so I don't have anything further.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you, anything else, board members? Make a motion, we adjourn to an executive session to discuss property and personnel. Give them a second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, let's adjourn.
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone, that was a great night, appreciate you all, for all your patience so much, thanks so much.